Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Pennsylvania County's Planning Commission, April the fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Ms. Rexdale, roll call, please.
Ms. Henderson?
Present.
Mr. Waters?
Present.
Mr. Horn?
Present.
Ms. Neese?
Present.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Oaks?
Here.
Mr. Harker?
Here.
Mr. Haymore?
Present.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for a moment of silence and I pledge allegiance to the flag. Gentlemen, if you move your cap. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seen. Does any citizen here have any comment to bring before the commission that is not on the agenda tonight? Good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Come around, sir. Yes, sir. Sir, let me read something to you before you speak. Where you s- each person addressing the board of hearing of citizens shall be a resident and landowner of Pennsylvania County and a registered agent of such re- uh, resident or landowner. Each person shall step up and give his name, the district, an audible tone of voice in order to record unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall be limited to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the, the hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of forty-five minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during the said sex- section who does not get the option to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent Chairman, Chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Yes, sir. Quote your name, please, sir.
Richard Cox.
Good evening, Mr. Cox. How are you, sir?
Fine.
Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board. Uh, I'm here as a, a citizen and also as a representative of the town of Chatham. And, uh, what I would like to do is, uh, say that the council has not had time to meet and consider the rezoning of the property from, uh, R-one to agricultural out, uh, on the, uh, north side of Chatham that is adjacent to the Chatham Medical Center.
Is this on the agenda for tonight?
Yes, sir.
What? Okay, we, we were under the impression that, that this is for individuals that's not on the agenda for tonight. So you'll have a chance on that. Let us get with that, okay?
Yes, sir.
That's fine. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Waters. I hear a second?
Second.
Second by? Mr. Dalton. Ready for vote?
Mr. Stokes?
I keep punching it.
You got it now?
You got it.
Let the, let the, let the record show eight, yes? Zero, nine. Approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? It's presented.
Make motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Horn?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harker. In discussion? Not. We're ready for vote. Let the record show eight, yes, no, against. Chairman, the board, I have no, nothing in, to Ms. Rexdale to need to brought at this time?
Not at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Open for public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article five, Division seven of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have empowered to hear, decide specific applications in support of ordinance and make recommendations to the board of supervisors or the board of zoning appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting health, safety, welfare, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, its prosperity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding the zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At seven oh six, case R twenty-two zero one-one is open for public hearing. Ms. Rexdale.
Case R dash two-two dash zero one-one, Jane Ellis Holding Company LLC, has petitioned to rezone fifty-two point zero one acres located on Mill Creek Road in the Bannister Election District from R-one Residential Suburban Subdivision District and A-one Agricultural District to A-one Agricultural District to allow for the u- for a utility scale solar energy, energy facility. Once the property is rezoned to A-one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash one-seven-eight are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative with Dimension Renewable Energy is here to represent the petition.
Come around, sir. Good evening. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Haymore and the rest of the Planning Commission. I appreciate your time tonight. My name is Kieran Seau, and I'm the Director of Development with Dimension Renewable Energy. We're a community solar developer, and we're proposing to rezone, thank you so much, a property located at six thirty-seven Mill Creek Road. It's currently double-zoned, R-one and A-one. We're interested in rezoning it to A-one, uh, and subsequently we'd be planning to submit an application for a special use permit for a community solar project. So I have a presentation here tonight. This is a quick overview. I'll give a brief introduction to who we are, what we do, and our experience developing these types of projects. And overview of what is the difference between community solar, which is a fairly new class of solar project in Virginia compared to true utility scarce scale solar projects, which I know this commission has seen, uh, to date through other applications. And I'll give an overview of what we're proposing on site, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. So I won't spend too much time on these next two slides, but just to give you an oversight, Dimension Energy has a deep bench of experience developing community solar projects. We solely develop this class of solar project. We do no true utility scale project. Uh, we're active in every single active community solar market. Um, today we develop projects in York, Maine, California. Since the community solar program is open in Virginia, we developed four projects elsewhere in the state which are going to construction later this year. Um, and be important to mention that we are a full turnkey developer. So whereas other developers might develop a project up to a certain point and then sell the project to another developer or perhaps Dominion, we are full turnkey, which means from day one, from policymaking, through construction, operations, and maintenance, Dimension Energy is the owner of the project, one-stop shop, um, which we find is a great benefit to, uh, the, the community. So the first question I always get asked is, what is community solar and why is it happening in Virginia now? And the answer to that is the Shared Solar Law, which is a piece of legislation that passed in September of two thousand and twenty, which created a community solar market. Essentially what this is, it's a consumer choice program where Dominion customers can subscribe to community solar projects that are developed in the state to save money on their monthly Dominion electric bill. The way I like to describe it is similar to rooftop residential solar, because that's something that people have seen or typically more familiar with. So if any of you have rooftop solar on your house, or maybe a relative or neighbor's house, if you've seen it before, it's very unlikely that in those cases, those homeowners purchase those panels outright and put them on their house, because that's very expensive. More likely what they've done is they've entered into an agreement with a residential solar developer who put their equipment on that person's roof and is selling that power back to that homeowner. And they're selling it at a rate that's cheaper than what that homeowner otherwise pays for their power from Dominion. And so they're saving on their electricity month over month. Community solar operates very similarly. So if you picture, uh, an entire neighborhood where every home has solar panels on the roof, and you take all those solar panels off and you aggregate them into one project, that is what a community solar project is. While electrically, the power is connected to Dominion's grid. When we are building the project, we go out to the community and we subscribe individual residential customers to receive a credit for a share of the solar power produced, which gets credited to their energy bill, similarly allowing them to save money month over month on their electric bill. And we think this is a, a really advantageous program because it allows us to reach a very wide audience of people. You know, for traditional rooftop solar, there are a lot of limiting factors that would prohibit someone from getting that benefit. First, they have to have access to their roof. So if they're renting their home or living in an apartment building, they wouldn't be candidates for rooftop solar. Um, on your home, there are specific criteria that you would need to meet. Your roof needs to be of a certain age that could support the solar panels. Your roof needs to be facing in the right direction. You can't have a, you know, a nice tree in your front yard that's shading out the panels. With community solar, none of this matters because the, the panels aren't actually on your home. They're elsewhere. You're just being credited for the power they produce. And I think most importantly, for those residential rooftop projects, typically those solar developers require the homeowners have a minimum credit score because they're putting their equipment on your roof. And, you know, we don't think that's right. And in fact, under this community solar program, one of the, you know, the, the attributes of the program that the state passed is that they not only don't require any minimum credit score, any Dominion customer can subscribe to the projects. They, in fact, are requiring that at least thirty percent of the offtake for these projects are subscribed by low and moderate income customers. Uh, and that's something that my company loves to see and something that we're leaning into as we find customers for this project because it allows us to provide a benefit and opportunity to those who can benefit most from those savings. So we think this is a great program. Uh, that can do a lot of good for the community. Um, with regard to the size of the program, the entire community solar program for all projects across the state for Dominion, uh, is two hundred megawatts in total. That's all of the projects. And the state's requiring that each individual project be no larger than five megawatts AC. Uh, and that's a really important number to remember here when we're considering kind of the size of these projects. They're, they're significantly smaller than perhaps some of the other projects this commission's seen. I want to include this slide because in our initial meetings that we've had with, with Emily and Vaden and some of the other folks from the county, one of the first, uh, you know, reactions we received was surprised that there were Dominion customers in the county. And, you know, we're very aware that there are other, you know, electrical cooperatives and municipal electric companies in the county that are also active. Folks like Mecklenburg Electric, Danville Electric. But our research shows that there are at least five thousand households that are Dominion customers, which represent around one in five homes in Pennsylvania County. So we think there's a big customer base who could benefit from a project like this. Um, what, what this map shows, the blue line shows Dominion's, uh, service territory. So you can see it kind of runs right down the middle of the state, kind of a long Highway twenty-nine. Uh, and what I have under this is, uh, the, what I believe are the future electoral districts as part of the redistricting effort. This is Plant A, which I believe is the preferred option that the county's going with. So it shows that each electrical district or each election district is at least partially located in Dominion territory. So there are folks from all parts of the county that could benefit from the project. Uh, and then again, this is just kind of a breakout showing the difference between community scale projects that we're proposing and true utility scale. And as I mentioned, under this program, the maximum size of a community solar project is five megawatts AC. And in fact, the project that we're talking about tonight, uh, is even smaller than that. It's three point seven five. So we're talking about very small projects compared to these true utility scale projects, which are substantially larger. I know this commission has seen projects that are fifty megawatts, a hundred, a hundred and fifty megawatts. So big differences in scale of project. And with that difference in capacity, there's also a difference in land use. So whereas these utility scale projects may be thousands of acres in size, ours are very small. Um, for our project that we're talking about tonight, the area under panel within our fence line is only fourteen acres. So that allows us to be a lot more careful when we're selecting sites, to only pick those properties that we think truly make sense, that could be designed in a way that avoids environmental resources, that does not disrupt the overall character of the community, uh, and that lets us properly screen the project from view. And then lastly, as I mentioned, offtake is a big differentiator here. While these large utility scale projects may sell the power to Dominion, uh, no different than a natural gas plant or a coal plant or maybe a large commercial client like a data center. For community solar projects, our offtake, our customers are individual residential customers who can subscribe to their project, receive credit, and save money on their electric bill. So we think this provides a great benefit to individual residents. So this is an overview of our project. So as Emily mentioned, the project's located on Mill Creek Road, six thirty-seven Mill Creek. The entire property itself is around fifty-two acres in size. And of that, we are leasing around twenty-three acres. And as I mentioned, fourteen would actually be the limit of our property itself, of our facility. And we like the site for a lot of reasons. Uh, one is it has kind of this, this interesting shape where you can see towards the bottom, there's that narrower section, which is our actual frontage along Mill Creek Road. But the project, the parcel kind of shifts backward and then expands. So what this allows us to do is design our project in a way that is far off the road. Um, additionally, we like that it's not in a very dense residential area. Um, to the south of us is the Chatham Medical Center. We also have some other commercial properties to the south of us. To the north of us is a large agricultural property. So there are actually very few residential properties that directly abut our property. As Emily mentioned, the site's currently double-zoned A-one, R-one. And so I, I know everyone here understands what that means, but for the benefit of the people in the crowd, that means that at one point, these were two parcels, one that was zoned agricultural and one that was zoned residential. And at some point, they were consolidated. And rather than picking one over the other, uh, both zonings carried forward, which is, uh, essentially what I understand to be in a ministerial oversight. So part of this rezoning is to simply correct that to align it with the, the county zoning code. Um, and another thing we liked about the site is that there's substantial vegetation already on site, some existing tree stand. And we could use that to effectively screen the project from view from many of the parcel boundaries. And where there are already areas cleared, uh, that will be supplemented with proposed vegetation in compliance with, uh, the solar law. Uh, and one more thing I want to highlight here, uh, in our very initial meetings, we met with, with Emily, Vaden, and Supervisor Barksdale, and we asked, you know, what would you like to see as we move forward in this process? And overwhelmingly, what we heard was, we want to see community involvement, community outreach, and community support. So that's something we really took to heart. And in response, we held a series of community meetings. We notified all adjacent properties to our own. Um, we held these in a variety of different ways over the past month. We held a meeting by Zoom and a meeting in person. Um, and we had some great conversations with neighbors, uh, who came out to ask questions about the project, understand what it is we were developing. I think it put everyone at ease to find that this was a much smaller project than some of the other projects that they probably seen in the county. Um, and we've had great conversations. So in response, you know, uh, one neighbor who is a leader in the community wrote a letter of support for the project, and I think that was provided to the Planning Department, uh, as well as the Board of Supervisors, uh, saying that he'd spoken with the other neighbors who attended the meeting, and they have no major concerns. Uh, the other outreach we did was to the County Chapter, the NAACP, and we had some great conversations with Anita Royson, the president of the chapter. We presented to her Executive Committee last week at one of their meetings, similarly had great conversations, asked questions about what type of project this is, who actually benefits. And I'm really proud to say that earlier this evening, um, Ms. Royson wrote a letter of support on behalf of this project as well. Um, so we're really proud of the work we've done here. Um, we think this project makes a lot of sense for the area we're developing in. You know, as a reminder, tonight, we're just seeking our recommendation of approval for the rezoning. We'll be coming back to this commission later for our special use permit. So happy to, in the interim time, continue to work with the town of Chatham, answer any questions they have. Um, and so essentially, we think this is a great project for the community. Um, this is just, once again, just a breakdown of how we're going to be complying with the code at minimum, uh, in many instances exceeding the requirements of the code. So you see here the required setbacks. It's typically one hundred and fifty to two hundred feet from parcel boundaries. You see for our side and rear yards, we're meeting that. For our front yard setback, as I mentioned, we're far off from Mill Creek Road. But even on top of that, from the road to our first panel, we exceed the front yard setback. Uh, we're three hundred feet away. Um, and as I mentioned, we have substantial vegetation on site, much of which will remain in place. Everything in green is vegetation that will remain. So this offers good vegetative buffer, mature tree stand, uh, at the perimeter of the site. And the areas in blue are areas that are, you know, currently cleared on the property, or perhaps we may even get to do some minor clearing for our project. And those will be replaced with proposed new vegetation, a hundred feet wide evergreen trees in compliance with the solar law. Uh, so we think this is a great project for the community, for the individual residents in the county at large. And in fact, you know, when we come back for our special use permit, we're happy to provide a, a series of conditions for our project that we're happy to commit to voluntarily. Uh, of course, many of which include, you know, complying with or exceeding the setbacks. We think there are local economic benefits. The first thing I mentioned is subscription, subscribership to local residents. You know, we're happy to, when we move forward with building the project, working with this commission, the county, to notify the residents to make sure folks are aware that this is coming, that they could benefit from the project, and that that way they could be the first who have the opportunity to subscribe to the project itself. Uh, that's something we'd be happy to do through mailers, additional community meetings, partnerships with civic groups, churches, PTAs. Uh, that's something that's very common that we love to do. And the second is a monetary contribution. So I know that this commission's familiar with siting agreements for the larger projects. Based on state law and state regulation, our project is technically too small to enter into a siting agreement. Uh, so we're not able to, to do one for the county. However, that doesn't mean we cannot make a contribution. So under our special use permit, under the state's special exception regulations, there is, uh, uh, some laws around, uh, contributions for public improvement funding, which will allow us as the, the developer to provide, you know, contributions to the county, uh, to support the project. And, you know, we've reviewed this. We've looked at, you know, what we can provide. This is something we've done in other counties where we've worked in the past. Uh, and we found that, you know, on a dollar per megawatt basis, you know, we can match the larger siting agreements that have been entered into between the county and the other developers for the larger projects. Um, so on a dollar per megawatt basis, based on that kind of pro-rata amount, we found that based on the size of our project, three point seven five megawatts AC, that can create tax revenue for the county in the amount of almost a quarter million dollars uh, over the lifespan of the system. Um, and we think this is a great benefit because it's, uh, revenue above and beyond what the county currently receives for its current agricultural use, is revenue for a development that is relatively low intensity and very small and tucked away and out of view. Uh, and then finally, it's, it's a use that can be provided that creates no strain on county services. As all of you know, you know, solar projects create no, you know, increase in traffic during operation. There's no water or sewer use, no new school age children. So this is a tax revenue and benefit for the county, uh, with no additional strain on services. So in summary, you know, we think this is a great project. We think it's been designed properly. Uh, we think rezoning in this area makes sense, and we think this project will create a, a great benefit for both the residents and the county at large. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions this commission has.
Any questions from any commissioner?
I have a few questions.
Sure. Hi.
Thank you. Thanks for coming to our county. Um, just two questions.
Sure.
You mentioned subscriptions.
Yes.
Um, based on the area that we have here, could you give me just a general, um, idea of what subscriptions costs would be?
Yeah, that's a great question. So to enter into a community solar project to subscribe, it costs nothing to sign up. Uh, it's typically a, a maximum of a twenty-five-year term. That is the term of the program that the state set in this initial legislation that was passed. But, uh, for residents, it costs nothing to sign up and nothing to terminate. So they could cancel at any time, and they could take their subscription with them if they move, as long as they stay within Dominion's, uh, service territory. And the discount, uh, that residents can receive by subscribing to the project is around ten percent on the credited bill amount, uh, which we find is, you know, market and typical for, or rather equivalent to, you know, typical residential rooftop projects.
So I guess for clarification, the subscription is a free subscription?
Yes.
Okay. Good to know.
Yes, it's, it's free to subscribe. And essentially, you know, this is perhaps, you know, it gets on the granular side, but essentially, the resident would be buying credits for the project, and that would be offsetting their Dominion bill. And so that's what results in the savings.
Of about ten percent?
Yes.
Okay. Good. All right. And to the constituents in the county who have supported this, um, is there an initiative or to the residents surrounding? Because I know a lot of our projects, the landowners, you know, it's, it's beneficial. So is there a benefit to, anyone surrounding this project? Because I'm hearing about the community.
Sure.
But how does this differ from that?
Sure. So I mean, if the, the neighboring residents are Dominion customers, they can subscribe to the project, save money on their electric bill month over month. And as part of that condition that we've proposed, you know, once we are going to subscribe the project and find those residents, we're happy to go out to the community to provide informational meetings, mailers, to make people aware that this is coming and they can receive this benefit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other question, Ms. Anderson?
Nope.
Anyone else have any question?
How did, Mr. Chairman? Um, what is the lifespan of a community scale project?
Sure. So as I mentioned, the state program has an initial term of twenty-five years. The solar project itself, you know, it's, it's similar technology that I'm sure all of you have seen, you know, polycrystalline silicon solar modules, steel and glass. Uh, the equipment itself typically has a lifespan of thirty-five to forty years. And what, what our expectation would be is that, you know, that there will be this benefit, you know, perhaps after the twenty-five-year period. And so we would see no reason why, you know, the, the state wouldn't extend that. But for, for now, it's a twenty-five-year term.
Is there any land there, um, that you may look to expand at some time, or is none available?
No. Right now, we are just planning to develop this project as proposed, which is three point seven five megawatts AC. And the reason for that is we, you know, as part of the development process, one is obviously permitting and engineering. The other piece is interconnection. So we're actively working with Dominion. We've submitted an interconnection for engineering review, and that's ongoing. And that is being studied at three point seven five megawatts AC. So we would not be able to expand, at least So we would not be able to expand, at least without going through the Dominion process again, but we think this is the right size for this area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead, sir.
Would anybody else be available to benefit from it, other than Dominion customers?
So for now, the program is for Dominion customers as written. And I think the motivation for the state to that respect was to, you know, for the first rollout, go with the biggest utility. I know, you know, they're probably looking at, you know, expansions of the program for other utilities and cooperatives, and, you know, that's something I wouldn't be surprised to see in coming years. But for now, it's only Dominion customers.
You know, Mecklenburg has a lot of customers in the northern end of the county. Correct.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
So you're saying there's a possibility that they might, that it might be changed from?
Who knows? You know, the state is constantly looking at new legislation. You know, I certainly don't have any additional information, but I wouldn't be surprised if the state looked to expand to other utilities and cooperatives. What I can say is for a project of our size, 3.75 megawatts AC, we believe that's big enough to subscribe around 750 homes, which is, you know, well within the 5,000 Dominion customers that are currently located in the county.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir. You can be seated, and you can be able to come back. We have some folks that wants to speak to it. Mr. Harris, come around, sir. Good evening, John. How are you, sir? Good to see you.
Good to see you. My name is John Harris. I live at 648 Strater Road in Chatham, next to Chatham. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna put out a couple of concerns that I have on this issue. I am the largest landowner next to the, this, this project. If you go directly to the north of this project, that's my land that's directly to the north, all the way down that length. Obviously, that has some concern always when you're a landowner right next door. You want to know, make sure everybody's done their due diligence, and they made sure everybody's looked at this and made sure this is the best use. I also own some, some of the land on the corner of Mill Creek and Strater, which would be to the, to the east, about 24 or 5 acres down there on that corner. It is an Ag 1. All mine is an Ag 1. So what I want to speak to is the, the, the whole idea of it being right there next, next to the, there's a church right there, there's our land right there. I just want the, I just want the commission to make sure that we've looked at all the uses that are available. I know, I'd like for the town of Chatham to have an opportunity. They're on the, the south side of this piece of land. I do know that there's some discussion, or even maybe further down the line, than discussion of water coming down Mill Creek Road that would be county water. That makes a big, that makes a big difference to our community out there, having water coming down there. We aren't, he was right, we're not really densely populated in there. It would probably more, be more densely populated, which would make more residential property available if that water did come down Mill Creek Road. The other, the other thing that I think is really to, to our detriment is none of our, the residents in that direct area is a part of Dominion. This is a Dominion process, the, you know, we don't get any credit for any of the community as, that's it, next to this project. We don't, or now, we don't. He said, and I don't know that the state is ever going to do anything about that either. It's this, Dominion is our largest energy resource in the state, and so very likely that the smaller resources, the co-ops, would have not a whole lot of power to get a part of that. So from my point of view, I would just like for this commission to make sure that we give, give this thing a good look, make sure all the community and the town, it's had an opportunity to all address it and talk about it. Thank you.
Any questions, Ms. Harris? Thank you, sir. Richard Cox, come around, Mr. Cox. We'll let you go this time. Good evening, sir.
Yes, Richard Cox. I'm a private citizen, as well as a town manager of Chatham. I'm concerned about this project because we may be adversely affected there at the medical center, center property by the development of a solar farm. And the council has not had time to meet and consider or discuss this project. It came out in the paper, I think, right after our past monthly council meeting. And I talked to several council members today and the mayor, and they do want to meet and consider this, and want to make sure that they have time to look at that and either support or not support this project. One of the things that concerns me about solar projects, and I've heard this over and over and over, you know, they take up agricultural land, so we lose that farmland. And in this case, it's zoned residential, and we do have a project that's getting ready to get launched to furnish public water down Mill Creek, down to Robin Court and beyond. And that residential property might, in the future, be developed residentially, and it would be beneficial to the town and county to be able to furnish water to private residences, which, if this project goes through, that would prevent that from happening. One of the other concerns I hear often is 25 years, 35 years, 40 years, the project's said and done, what happens to the solar panels? I've never heard anybody say that solar panels can be recycled. And, you know, a lot of promises are made about, well, we'll take care of the property and we'll remove them, but that doesn't always happen either, I don't think. So I think it's a major concern for a lot of people when these projects get put in, what happens to the future generations when this project has run its economic life? And then you've got solar panels, you've got underground cabling, all of that, topsoil's been disturbed, what happens? So the town would like to have the opportunity to consider this in a public hearing, and we don't feel like we've had sufficient time to do that, to examine it closely. We appreciate the board's consideration of it, and we hope that we'll provide at that time so that we can discuss it. Thank you, sir.
Any question for Mr. Cox? Go ahead.
I had a question. Tonight looks like it's just a rezoning from, from R1 and A1 to just A1. Any, any decision on a actual solar facility going in would be, that would get started with a special use permit, which at the earliest would be next month. Would, is a month enough time for the town to consider all those things?
Yes, sir, I think so.
So even if we vote to rezone all these parts, both parcels back to A1, that's not saying that we're giving a go-ahead with the, with the solar. That would come at the next step?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So a month would be enough time to?
I, I would hope that the board might consider postponing the rezoning. I'd hate to see it rezoned to Ag and then be determined that it wouldn't be appropriate for highest and best use for that property, and then have to rezon it back to R1 again.
Mr. Cox, a part of it now, I don't know what percentage of it, but, Ms. Rexdale, do you know what percentage of it is already agriculture?
The majority of it is already agricultural. There's a small portion that I believe was residential. It was an existing residential property, and before our office started reviewing plats before they were recorded, a plat was recorded, putting those two together, creating that double zoning. But the majority of it, I believe, is A1.
That's what I was thinking.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I can also clarify on the timeline. So you all will make a recommendation tonight, and then next month, it will go before the Board of Supervisors for final approval or adoption. They cannot submit a special use permit application until after the Board of Supervisors' meeting if the rezoning is approved at the board's May meeting. So you would have a month before a final decision was made on the rezoning, and then you're looking at probably another four months before the final decision on the special use permit would be made.
Thank you. That's a good point.
Thank you.
Mr. Cox, I'd answer your question, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Sir, you have last favor, man.
First, I appreciate the comments provided by both John and Richard. You know, a couple of points in response, you know, first to John. You know, we, we met with John, we spoke with him at our community meeting that we held a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, he did notify us of, you know, the, the town of Chatham's idea to extend the water line. You know, one thing I'll say is that, you know, we understand that perhaps in the future, the town of Chatham may want to extend that water line to serve, you know, some of the communities that are perhaps down to the south on Mill Creek Road. And frankly, you know, they can do that, and our project does not inhibit their ability to do that. So a project like this would not, you know, compromise any intent for the town of Chatham in that respect. One thing I mentioned is, if you look at the future land use GIS for the county, this area is actually, you know, flagged as future industrial use. So I think it's very unlikely, given kind of the prospects and thoughts for the county and how they have labeled the site for future use, that it would go to residential. However, the areas south of Mill Creek Road, perhaps where these gentlemen are talking, are labeled for future use as residential. So we think that a water line would benefit those areas which the county has flagged for future residential use. And frankly, if there are going to be industrial uses across the street, we think a low-intensity use like a solar project, which is typically transitional between agricultural and more commercial areas, makes sense in an area like that. You know, with regard to, to the church and, you know, the highest and best use, one thing we'll say is, of course, you know, as part of this project and to be in compliance with the special use permit standards, we would be putting substantial vegetation around the entire perimeter of the site where there isn't already existing vegetation. So we don't expect this will be an impact to neighboring properties with regard to things like aesthetics. You know, certainly, if we look back at that figure we probably, we previously showed, much of John's property is already shielded from that side. We have reached out to the church as part of our notification to neighbors. In fact, in the beginning, we wanted to host our community meeting there. So we reached out to them a few times, unfortunately, never heard back. Would be happy to meet with them and continue to work with them throughout this process. And now to Richard's point, the first thing I want to say off the bat is, we did notify the town. As part of our notification to neighbors, the town of Chatham did receive a letter that was sent by certified mail, and we have record that it was delivered. With regard to, you know, taking up agricultural land, you know, I imagine most of the properties and most of the projects previously approved by this commission are agricultural land. And we think that solar is very compatible with agricultural land because it's not intensive. There is no disruption to topsoil, there's very limited impervious surface, the, the racking equipment is driven into the ground, and topsoil stays in place. So we think this is a good use for agricultural land and a good, you know, companion use to kind of this nearby low-density residential. With regard to the question about the neighbors not being within Dominion, John's right, his property is non-Dominion, he is Mecklenburg Electric. The neighbors to the east are Mecklenburg Electric, that's kind of the line for Dominion. But the properties to the south and further north above his property are Dominion. So there certainly are Dominion customers in the area who can benefit from the project. And then last, with regard to decommissioning, what happens at end-of-life? I'm sure this commission is familiar with the decommissioning bond that we would post. At end-of-life, it would be on the developer to remove the, the panels from the site. But, you know, at worst-case scenario, there's always a safety that there's a decommissioning bond in place, so the county always has a way to remove the panels. The panels are recycled. As I mentioned, it's polycrystalline silicon, which is silicon, glass, and steel, very easy to recycle, similar to, you know, any other type of e-waste, laptops, cell phones, which we all know are commonly recycled today, similar parts. So, you know, we, we don't think it'll negatively benefit the medical center for the same reason. It'll be effectively screened, it'll be at least 200 feet away from the parcel boundary, probably 300 or 400 feet away from the medical center itself. And, you know, as far as neighbors go, once the project is constructed, as we all know, it's quiet, this type of project doesn't move throughout the day, so it's a static, fixed-tilt facility. We think this is a great neighborhood to have. Thank you very much.
Any questions for you? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think that's all we had. No other things. So it's 7:40. Case R22-011 is closed to public hearing. Ms. Henderson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In the case of R22-011, the request to rezone the property from R1 to A1, I do recommend that we pass this on to the Board of Supervisors for positive recommendation.
Motion by Ms. Henderson.
I second.
Second by Mr. Waters. Any discussion?
No, there wasn't, ma'am.
Mr. Henderson, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Stokes seconded it.
Oh, Mr. Stokes, I'm sorry. Any discussion? No, we're ready for a vote.
Waiting on Gary.
Let the record show eight, four, zero against. 7:42. Case R22-012 is open to public hearing. Ms. Rexdale.
Case R-22-012, Martha Adams, has petitioned to rezone 0.56 acres located on Route 40, East Gretna Road, in the Banister Election District, from R1 Residential Subdivision District to M1 Industrial District Light Industry, to allow for property lines to be adjusted. Once the property is rezoned to M1, all uses listed under Section 35-8383 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. I will note that somehow another staff summary was submitted in your packet as well, so if you scroll down past that, the correct summary is in your packet. And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Adams is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Adams, come around, sir. Good evening. Do you have anything you'd like to add that we don't have in the packet?
I don't believe so. It's a very small wedge-shaped piece of property that's always been right there as part of my dad's property, so.
Yes, sir. Anybody have any question, Mr. Adams? We good, I think, sir. We looked at that, it was just a smidgen, I called it. It needed to be squared away. 7:44. Case R22-012 is closed to public hearing. Ms. Henderson, you're on a roll, my lady.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say that, Mr. Adams, I live on the other side of that fence. Nice to meet you. Yeah, I'm happy to make the motion that we approve or make a proposal to the Board of Supervisors to approve this.
Motion by Ms. Henderson.
I second.
Second by Ms. Meese. Any further discussion? Waiting on yours, it's not going through. There we go. Let the record show eight, four, zero against. 7:45. Case R22-014 is open for public hearing. Ms. Rexdale.
Case R-22-014, Joshua and Amy Jennings have petitioned to rezone 9.83 acres located on US Highway 58, Martinsville Highway, in the Tunstall Election District, from RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District, to allow for an indoor gun range. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, Joshua Jennings is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Jennings, come around, sir. Anything you'd like to add that we do not have in the packet?
Well, I haven't seen your packet, but I will say this, it's an existing business that we're already operating, we're retail and gunsmithing operations. My intention is to move it up the road two miles and augment it with a indoor, quiet, safe range with the, literally the operations going on, both the community being quiet and easy to deal with, and the range and retail gunsmithing operations all have to work together. So literally, it's whatever the planning commission wants us to do to make sure that occurs, we will have it happen. The DOE, the DOD, and the NSSF, as well as the NRA, all have methods that have been well proven and tested to make sure that this is a quiet operation and will be far less quiet than what 58 West already is. And if y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Questions, Mr. Jennings? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank y'all.
7:47, case R-22-014 is closed to public hearing. Mr. Oaks.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion if we rezonate 1339-954594 and 1339954137 to A1.
Motion by Mr. Oaks, do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Meese. Any further discussion? Let the record show eight, yes, zero against. So case R-22-14 will be rezoned from RC1 to A1 and be recommended to the Board of Supervisors. At 7:48, case S-22-004 is open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case S-22-004, Aquilius Canigie and Jacob Mass have petitioned for a special use permit on 351.38 acres located on State Road 678, Corner Road, in the Banister Election District for a sawmill. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Aquilius Canigie is here to represent the petition.
Canica, sir, do you have anything that you'd like to add that's not in the packet? No one else, I don't think?
I think you have some signed up.
Yes. Brenda McGregor. Good evening, Ms. McGregor.
Good evening. My name is Brenda McGregor. I live at 1340 Corner Road in the community of Riceville, which is the road in which they want to start the sawmill. On this road, it's a dead end road and there's approximately eight residents that live there full time. I lived at the residence, my home, for 40 years now. And everybody else that's pretty much on that road have lived there longer than me, so we have a lot of years of life on that road. We're a quiet road with very little traffic, just usually the people that live on the road. We enjoy the spring, summer, and fall months being outside, doing activities in the yard, and we are just opposed of a sawmill creating noise.
Any questions for one? I understand it's not going to be a commercial venture, is that not correct? Because what I'm...
Um, I can let the applicant explain that, but to our knowledge, it is for their primary, their primary use. I think they will cut lumber for maybe some neighbors in their Amish community, but I do not believe that this will be a full-blown commercial sawmill operation. What we've been told is it's a manual, it's a manual sawmill, not, you know, what we would normally see at a commercial, commercial operation.
Do you understand that, Ms. McGregor?
Yes, I do. But in the three months since the residents have moved in, we've seen quite a bit of truck traffic on our road. And so it's not people that are, that live on our road, and that is our concern, are the extra trucks and traffic and possible noise.
Yes, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. McGregor? Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening, Ms. Robinson, welcome.
I'm doing well.
Fine, thank you, ma'am.
Well, I live right across the road from Brenda McGregor, we're neighbors. And I live on 1441 Corner Road, that's my address. And I've lived, lived on Corner Road, I was born down there, I've lived there all my life. And it's always been peaceful, like she said. And I only thing I got to say that I agree with what she just said.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Robinson? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Arlene Coles? You don't want... Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm just like my aunt that's passed, that's come from up here. I've lived all my life and been peaceful, quiet. And them peoples came down there with them horses and buckets and they don't clean up behind the horses and stuff and they litter, litter the road. And it's a headache when you clean your car up and you gotta ride the road and sprout it all up on your car and stuff like that. And they just, that's biggest concern I got, then is the noise and the traffic. And we've always had the peaceful and quiet down there. And now since they moved down there, it's, they just throw it down the wack. That's really my oppose.
Okay. Any question for Mr. Glass? Thank you, sir. Cleo Glass?
She's not, she's not even... I can't hear her down.
Okay.
I guess I could stand, but I sit.
You can sit? We'll take, we'll get it to you. Good evening, Ms. Glass.
Good evening. How y'all doing today?
Fine, thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm with, that's my son, that's my sister, that's my neighbors, and that's my girlfriend. So I'm here to say, I've been living down there, I'm 85 years old. And I was down right across where Brandon live until I moved up the road. And so everything, you never know, a car, nothing common. Sometimes, you know, I don't know nothing about what they doing, but still, you know, it's what's going on with them when they going, traveling back and forth themselves. When, by me being handicapped, I don't come out too much. And so this noise has never have been because we all have lived at the end of the road. And we thought that was the quietest place of all, nobody never had to move. And I know they, they got to make a living just like we is, but still, I don't know.
Yes, ma'am. Any question for Ms. Glass?
I think that's about it.
Thank you, ma'am. No one else has signed up to, to speak?
I think I've signed up, I can ask you, please?
Yes, ma'am, come around. Good evening, would you state your name, please, ma'am?
Good evening. I'm Betty George.
Yes, ma'am.
I am the person that lives straight across the road from these people. And they have had quite a bit of traffic trying to get in there and get situated, bringing in different kinds of farming equipment and animals and things. So there has been a lot of traffic, but that probably will cease as soon as they get organized and find a way to make a living for themselves. And I know there's been more truck traffic, but that will cease too. It's not like they're going to be running in and out every few minutes, because that's not happening. And I live straight across from them. And the sawmill, they have cranked that sawmill up, but I don't even hear it. And I'm the one closest to them. So it's not like it's going to be a noise situation.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for?
Mr. Chairman, I guess it's hard for me to believe, if they travel by carriage, that can't present so much noise. And like she's saying, right now, it's trucks getting them situated and established, is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
And after that's all established, if they using the sawmill for their own personal gain, I can't imagine commercial trucks coming in there.
No.
For what reason?
No, that's right. They're cutting some logs in there right now. So of course you're gonna have some truck traffic for that.
Now, I don't live near the Amish family, but I can say I've heard very positive comments about an Amish family moving into your neighborhood. They're very good, solid people, they don't harm you, they work their own way.
Absolutely.
And it's probably protection for you, you know, to have that type of neighbors in your neighborhood. It could have been sold, the land could have been sold to someone you didn't really know. It could have created crime.
We were absolutely worried about that. And we were so very pleased that these people did get it. And they're some of the best neighbors that we have ever had.
That's good. Appreciate you coming forward and expressing your opinion.
Thank you all for listening.
Any other questions for? Yes, ma'am.
Do you understand that there's one way into this, your neighborhood? And that's, that's the only way to get in and out? Is this one road, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, it's a dead end road.
Would this sawmill be seen visible from that road, or is it back into the...
That sawmill is eight tenths of a mile back in the woods from our property, straight across the road from us.
Okay, thank you.
So in essence, you, if there were noise, you would hear it more so than the others? Is that what I'm hearing? You're closer to the sawmill?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for?
That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate it.
Thank you all for listening.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else?
Ms. Ragsdale, are there any conditions to this, or...
Staff has not recommended any conditions, but if, you know, you feel that restricting this to a sawmill for their own personal use and the use of their community would be appropriate, you do have the ability to place that condition on the special use permit, and that would prohibit this from being a commercial sawmill operation, like we see, we've seen in other parts of the county. You do have that ability.
If I could, if I could address...
Yes, Ms. Henderson, go right ahead.
I'd like to address the gentleman making the petition, if possible, or however...
Or the gentleman that's petitioned, you want him?
If possible.
Sir, would you come forward? Good evening, sir, welcome. She wants to ask you a couple of questions, it's in her district, I think.
Good evening, how are you? And I'm following on the heels of Ms. Ragsdale's comment. So if you could just briefly describe what your intentions are, because I personally would not want to recommend any kind of restriction if, you know, that wasn't your intent. But what do you see as the use for this going forward, let's say the next 10 years?
Well, I'm not gonna say that. We're probably gonna saw some, you know, for, I'm sure we're gonna be selling some lumber. I'm not gonna talk, you know, we'll probably do that. We need to get our barns sawn out, but we do want to make some money with it too, you know, we need to have some sort of income. And there is gonna be some traffic, probably. Right now, there's logs going in and out, so there's a little more, there won't be that much. We're not, it's, we're gonna do all our work with our hands, we don't have a lot of big equipment to do it. So we're not gonna be like every five minutes, trucks are gonna be going in and out.
Okay.
And as far as the horse and horse stuff, we're gonna, we'd like to talk with them. I mean, everybody, come, come talk to us, you know? We want to be good neighbors, we want to do what we have to, you know? So, we're, there's gonna be some trucks for bringing in logs, maybe one today, or I don't even know if we're gonna use one load a day. But, yeah.
Okay. One other question, if this is permitted. So when you say the logs, are they going to be used for like buildings, like the small buildings, or are we talking like lumber for homes? I mean, what scale of lumber are we talking?
Uh, some of it's probably gonna be used for buildings. We have a neighbor across the river, he's an Amish that he builds pallets.
Okay.
I'm gonna say the majority of it's gonna be going to him, that he's, he would use it for his pallets that he's making.
Okay, so more small scale lumber? Okay, thank you. I'm prepared to make a recommendation.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Wanted anybody else to have any questions for this?
Sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
802, case S-22-004 is closed to public hearing. Ms. Henderson.
Okay, in the case of S-22-004, I'd like that we would make a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals that this be approved as requested without condition.
Is that a second?
I second that.
Second, Ms. Meese. Any further discussion? Let the record show eight, yes, zero against. So in case S...
Looking at again, seven, yes, one abstaining.
It's not on mine.
I got eight for eight, too.
Yeah, Mr. Harper abstaining.
Must, oh, seven, yes, one abstaining. Showing eight, eight on mine.
Mine, too.
Sure, but eight or eight on mine.
One abstaining. So in case S-22-004, special use permit, 351 acres has been granted to be recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeal. At 804, case S-22-006 is open to public hearing.
Case S-22-006, Michael Malahan has petitioned for a special use permit on 0.90 acres located on Drucker Court in the Tunstall Election District for a placement of a double-wide mobile home to be used as his personal residence. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Michael Malahan is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Malahan, is there anything you want to say that we do not have in the packet?
No, just the only thing we didn't understand was that it was zoned a certain way, we weren't told that.
I didn't understand, come around, sir. I'm sorry, it's just so far.
When we initially purchased the land and the house together as a package, we didn't understand that it was zoned a certain way, we weren't told that when we bought the land, until we went to get... We weren't told that when we bought the land, until we went to get the building permit from Yates Homes, so trying to get a new house built out there.
Okay, I understand. Any questions from Mr. Malahan? Thank you, sir. At 806, case S-22-006 is closed to public hearing. Mr. Oaks.
Uh, this, uh, I lost it here. This piece of property is 26 module homes in that development. That's, that's the only thing that's in there, and so I recommend that we change its zoning. I lost it. I recommend that we, we change this, give a special use permit for case S-22-006.
Motion by Mr. Stokes. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Meese. Any further discussion? No, we're ready for a vote. Let the record show eight yes and zero no on case S-22-006 for a special use permit on 0.9 acres to be recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special use permit. Ms. Raxdale, I think that's it.
That is correct. We do not have any old business, new business. We will have six cases next month. I believe they're in front of you, three are rezoning, three special use permits.
Nothing further. No, we adjourn.